Okay, it is five o'clock on the wall. And we are having a special meeting today to talk about the 2021 budget. We'll turn it over to the administrator to enlighten us.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the council. Thanks, John. So tonight, we are just having a workshop. We're going to talk about some updates on our 2021 budget and then also updates of regarding our recycling center. I put the recycling center first on our agenda, but I really don't have a preference. Does anybody have a preference on what we start with?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So we'll start with the recycling center. So included for you tonight, I provided two pieces of information. I guess what I'll do is I'll back up a little bit here. Our current status for the recycling center is the county has eliminated all but two locations for the recycling program starting in 2021. So Nisswa is one of our, Nisswa is one of the locations that would be eliminated unless the city wants to continue it on our own and come up with the funding. I have discussed the idea of shared funding with county staff. And based on the policy that the county board passed in May, the county would provide for 50% funding for the expenses to operate a recycling center if the city were to use the same hauler that the county contracts with. They do not have, they do not know who that hauler is yet. They will not know probably until November. And we, based on past history, we've gone through a few haulers. We have a very good relationship right now with Waste Partners. And I know that, I speak for our staff that say they'd like to continue that relationship if we can. The county also said that they wanted to keep with one hauler to keep signage consistent, dumpsters consistent, things like that. I personally don't know that that really matters. We maintain a very clean and friendly usable space. And I think that we've done a great job. And Waste Partners has done a great job with their signage and things like that. But those are the reasons that I was given at this point. We haven't reached out directly to the county board. And that is one of the things that we certainly can do as a next step. Waste Partners has quoted the city a cost of $70,000 to operate our recycling center as is for 2021. So that's the number we're working with. And that's included in our draft 2021 budget.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that assuming the same volume next year as this year? Because if we're going to be one of two, we're going to probably have more come in.
One of three.
So one of three.
Right.
Yeah, so it's based upon a higher volume?
Eric Logi from Waste Partners, he does provide me with his spreadsheet how he calculates. I didn't look specifically to see what those volumes are. I would guess he would be very savvy to consider those factors and say, well, do I anticipate a growth, how much, things like that. I could look at that. But I'm guessing to your point, we'll get mid-year and then we'd have to increase our costs because there's more activity. Is that what your concern is?
Well, I'm just thinking that several places around the county are shut down. It goes someplace and it'll probably end up part of it here.
Certainly.
So it'd be more volume, more cost to handle everything. That's all.
Right, okay. I would anticipate that he's considered that. Hopefully, he's put enough buffer in there to account for some growth, I would guess. But you're right, I would assume just because of our location and things like that, we would be a very, you know, ideal place to stop. So that's, that's certainly something to think about.
I do know that, Don, that Ideal Township is still going to be open. So, and they're the closest recycling center to us. Pequot's been closed for a while. They haven't taken anything. Lake Shore still has theirs behind the City Hall. But Marefield is, no longer has anything. Center Township no longer has any. So it's possible that we could see an increase. But I know Terry over at Lake Shore, when we were discussing this a while back, I talked to her and she said that, you know, they're getting a lot of, you know, a lot of their people come there and drop it off. But I just, so.
So what I did to help us process kind of how we get through the decision-making on what we do is, so I created hopefully a decent flow chart for the council to review. It will just help walk through if we want to keep our recycling program. After our last workshop in July, I got the sense individually from council members that you'd like to see us maintain the recycling center. You know, barring any really, really significant issues that seemed to be a goal of the council. So I certainly want, you know, feedback if that's otherwise. But basically, if yes, if we want to keep our program, are we willing to levy taxes to continue to pay for it? We'll have some cost sharing in this, if not all of the cost potentially for that. And it kind of goes through the different scenarios to kind of help us walk through that. So I wanted to provide that to you to review and to, you know, hopefully help us work through those things. At our Public Works meeting a couple of weeks ago, we did talk about this. Eric from Waste Partners came. And, do you need one, Mike? You got it? Perfect. And we talked a little bit about options and things. The biggest challenge that I have right now and Tom is that to really establish a true, what I envisioned would be an enterprise fund for this and create the right revenue streams coming in for fees, charging for fees and things like that, will take time to do it right. And it's just, in all honesty, to find out about this in May, to get into a budget season, to then try to figure this out, to start January is really difficult to do that well. In my mind, I think we're in the position to either say we're going to pay for the service and maintain the center as is for one year and figure out all of these big questions. Or, and we can ask the county to cost share. We can still do that, you know, get an official answer from the county board. Or we don't. And we see maybe what feedback we get from the public and things like that. I provided in your regular council packet, the survey information that I've received so far from residents about the recycling center. So you can use that. We could broaden our scope of getting feedback. We could send out a mailer, citywide, or a postcard or something if that's just another option to share. But that's kind of where we're at. I struggle to be able to do a lot more than to say either we feel like we can just spend $70,000, maybe use reserve money, might be a good use for something like this for next year, and then try to make a long-term plan.
Does the county understand that by them not making a decision until November, it was a strain on all the other cities trying to figure out their budgets?
I think ultimately, we're probably the only community looking to keep our center. So for them, probably, you know, they don't know that that impacts them a ton. But I would try to appeal mostly to the, for one year, can you use your cost share policy, but just work with us to say we can work with our hauler and maintain it as very successful location. But I also included a draft letter and it's, has a lot of information and detail in it. But basically, it just makes that request of the county board. And if the council, if you'd like to read this tonight or over the next day and let me know, I would suggest then putting that on our agenda tomorrow night for approval to send to the county board if the council were to so choose. So that's what that's for. Welcome. Hi.
I read your letter really quickly and it's more what I was thinking anyway.
Okay.
It looks good to me.
Great.
I know I'm at the point where I'm kind of thinking that we run it ourselves. If the county is willing to help us out, great. We just kind of stay status quo for now, stay over here. We spend the money from reserves to operate it for a year. And we get that feedback from the public because it is going to be a levy increase if everyone, if they want that. Just so everyone understands that, it's going to cost them in the future. And we're going to have to figure out what it is, where it's going to go. I think that putting it out by, Tom has said, putting it out by the waste treatment plant, it's easy to, it's easy to supervise, easy to keep tabs on it. We use some technology and use some good cameras and things, put a fence up around it, a cement pad or two or three or something. And working with our current hauler, I know he's willing to, you know, I believe he's purchased and put in the, or purchased the cameras over here himself, I believe.
He has. He'd be willing to upgrade and improve some things, just so long as we're working together in that regard.
And he has a good relationship with the PD. Whenever he has a problem, he gets the information to the police department and the officers take care of it. So he's had, you know, he likes working with us too, so.
This letter that was drafted is maybe a first step to ask the county, here's the deal. If they don't want to do it, then we can look at other options.
Right. I agree. That's something we can decide tomorrow. But I think it would be a good use of the reserve fund, just for a year. So, I mean, otherwise, we're looking at 25, 25, to almost a 3%, 2-point-some percent increase alone right there. So that will go over like a lead balloon.
And certainly this, we can talk more about recycling as we get into the budget part of that as well. I just wanted to give a quick update on what I provided to the council. And then, so if you have more questions about recycling, as we talk about budget, we can surely, we can surely talk about that. Give the mayor a moment to get settled. Hello? Welcome.
The mayor would take care of it.
Great. Great. So we just did a quick recap overview of what I provided regarding recycling. So there's a memo, a draft memo that I prepared. And my suggestion would be to include it as an addition tomorrow night. Give the council time to look at it and to see if you'd like to approve it and send it to the county board regarding our recycling program. So take a look at that. And if there's no major objections, I'll just add it to the agenda and we can talk about that tomorrow. And then the other thing I did was I created a flow chart to help with decision-making process regarding the recycling center and options. So you're going to take a look at that too. It is still included in our draft 2021 budget. So we'll continue with that until a point in time if the council decides to take that offer, to do something different. So take a look at that and see if that helps at all as we kind of work through it.
Yeah, thank you for putting together that flow chart. That'll, I think that's nice to have for matters like this.
Perfect.
So, thanks.
Okay. I'm happy to jump into the budget unless there's other questions.
Are you looking for any feedback at all?
Certainly, yeah, yeah.
So I don't know if the council has anything that they wanted, you know. Myself, I would, you know, I think it's important that we keep the recycling myself because it gets used a lot. I mean, I bring things up there and I'm amazed at how many people are, I mean, there can be three, four vehicles there at a time. And as soon as one leaves or two leave, another one comes and they're all unloading bags and boxes. So it is, it is, you know, it is certainly an important service. And there's a cost that goes with it, obviously. But it sure saves a lot of trash from going into the, into the ground. So that's kind of my take on it.
Okay. I think I've heard the same sentiment as well in my conversations with council members. So it seems like that's something that the community wants and values and the council recognizes that. So take a look at that letter and then, yeah, we can talk about that more tomorrow night, next steps.
Thank you, thank you.
Yep.
You know, maybe one other thought, and it's bigger than this meeting, but it may come to a, it may be wise to look to encourage the county to pull together all the communities that have had recycling and that are going to be losing it and just have a, have a bigger discussion about recycling and the costs, obviously. And see if there's any, you know, see if there's any ideas on how to make it, if there's ways to make it more efficient than it is. And then also, it'd be interesting to learn a little bit about how the, how the cost of recycling, you know, the resale cost of recycling, you know, how that plays into this, you know, when, you know, if aluminum is at 28 cents versus 48 cents, how much does that impact the recycling in the county and as far as recouping costs and so on? But that's, at the moment, that's certainly bigger than what we are talking about. So it's all I have.
Thank you.
I agree.
Okay, agreed. Moving along, guys.
Okay. We'll jump into the budget then. Hopefully, I can, I'm going to put up the, so I provided a brief, a few brief worksheets for the council for tonight. Basically, just, oh, that might be, just our budget summary, overall general fund budget summary and the line items that are mostly impacting the budget. So at this point in time, we are looking at a budget increase from 2020 to 2021 of 2.33%. And what that equates to from a levy perspective is we're at 5.39%. That happens when our revenues change. We have our revenues and our levy taxpayer dollars. And if our revenues change, significant portion of the funding for the recycling program going away, we have to make that up with our levy. So that's why those numbers aren't the same. Typically, they're, they're not. You hope usually they're a little closer just because it logically connects a little bit more. But, but that is why we're seeing a bigger increase. As I noted in my memo, I emailed it to you last night. So you probably haven't had a ton of time to look at it. The major pieces to what that 5.39 represent is our recycling center and our employee wages and health insurance combined really comprise most of that increase. I also included the commission and the committee pay only from a standpoint, the dollars aren't significant, I'll say. But I'm looking at some point for feedback from the council on if you would like to really implement that for 2021, for our parks and our public works groups. I have removed the additional staff request from the police department for 2021. I know we're trying to hold the budget and the levy tight. We'll continue to work on pulling data together and more information so the council can better understand what that might look like in the future and what those needs are. So certainly expected to just want to make sure that's on your radar and then we'll continue to talk about that in the future. And I also just mentioned, just so you have a gauge, as far as the current CPI index reflects an increase of 0.7% for the year. So I know the 2% is higher than that. Because we have upcoming Teamsters contract negotiations, I don't know what that looks like yet. I haven't received any notice from them that they want to negotiate, hoping soon. I felt it was probably prudent to keep it at the 2% for now until we work through that piece of it and then see how the rest of the numbers pull together. And then I have also reached out and I'm working with PFM on creating a model so that we can plug in a levy number and see what that impact is to our residents, our seasonal homeowners, commercial businesses, et cetera. So we can really gauge what a 5%, 2% increase in our levy, what that looks like. I don't know if we'll do it per month or per year, but we'll figure that out. So we can say this increase equates to $72 more per year or something like that. I think it would help to really give you a perspective on what that looks like. Because sometimes when we're talking about large sums of money, it just doesn't translate across. So I expect to have that in the next probably week. I think I said two weeks in my memo, but I'm hopeful that it'll be soon. It just wasn't going to be in time for tonight. But for our next budget meeting, we'll definitely have that.
That'd be really important and great to have. I think it's a way to, not only for the council to understand, but to be able to have a discussion with citizens and help them understand for those who have questions about it, you know, what, what exactly does it mean individually? So I think that's, it'd be wonderful that PFM, if they can get us a formula set up that we can, that you can plug numbers into and it can give us those costs per citizen or per household. So that's fantastic.
Yeah, the idea will be that it will, they'll set it up in such a way that then I can update the market value numbers for our city and things every year so that we can just keep running with it every budget season, which I think will be really helpful. So, so with that, my recommendation at the end of my memo is to set a preliminary levy at 5% increase and then hopefully wait until we get through Teamsters negotiations to see where those numbers land. And then ideally in October, we could come back and have another budget meeting. And I would also present all of our enterprise funds and how things are going for our liquor and sewer funds and all of that. I know it's not zero. I know it's not one or two, but I'm just trying to be realistic and give myself some room to work with that. The recycling center is a big piece of that. We're trying to put some of those pieces together as well. So that's, that's kind of where I landed after looking at everything last night. But certainly want to get your feedback and.
What is the decrease in health insurance affect the premiums or whatever?
What was your question?
From 7.4 to 5%? How much does that affect premiums or is it hard to answer because of individual?
It's a little hard to answer because everybody's a little bit different with the age-based premium. I didn't look at it from the perspective of, okay, single contribution now is X and this will change it to Y. I didn't really look at it that way. I just looked at it from the city perspective, you know, it'll save $4,000, it's something. Trying to balance both health insurance and then wages. And we're not quite sure where the wages are right now. So I'm just trying to balance both, but.
Has Teamsters reached out?
No.
Okay.
Two questions for Jenny. I noticed in the expenditure, the city council has gone from $23,000 to $30, is that because of the ancillary staff, part-time for us? Or what is the increase for?
That is actually, thank you. That is actually what we did was we combined the mayor and the council budgets. So the mayor line, as you can see, it went down 6,000. And then I increased it. We increased by 70. Probably were looking at meetings and things like that. So it.
Okay, it's not ancillary staff then?
No.
Okay. Then the, the cost of commission and committee pay, I don't think we've decided that.
Correct.
Do you want some discussion on that?
I would love that if anyone wants to share their thoughts.
I was just wondering, how many additional individuals would that cover?
That would cover about 10.
Total 10?
Correct.
And we have how many right now? You have five planning commission members and nobody on the park board?
Well, planning commission already gets paid. So we already budget for that. So that's not included here.
Okay.
So five public works committee members and five parks commission members.
And which line, which line item is that, Jenny?
Well, that would be, it would be, it would be absorbed into, so like Public Works Committee would be absorbed in the Public Works Department under wages. I just pulled out the number and said it's $7,000 added to our budget. It's a quarter percent.
Was there a request for that or?
There was, yes. I did have a Public Works Committee member request consideration of it. And I said I would look at that. And at that time, I didn't know how, what the dollars would be involved. But I looked at it and I said, well, from a dollar's perspective, it's really not significant. But it is a change in policy and practice. And so I think that's fair for the council to, to look at that and to have some discussion on it.
So I have some questions on the, on page one. The expenditures.
Yep.
Just looking for, just looking to understand, city clerk goes, is, proposed, looks like proposed, well, it's go up, what, $8,000, thereabouts, $8,700? Can you, what's involved with that, with those dollars? Where do they come from?
Yep, mostly that increase would be attributable to staff. That's myself, Maggie and Jonathan. There weren't any significant changes to supplies, training, other, other things like that. So it's probably just increase in wage costs.
Okay. Something that, you know, I don't know how I feel about, but I'm just going to bring it up and ask the council. You know, we have the city attorney listed for $25,000. Do we need the city attorney at every meeting? Or do we want to, or would we want to consider asking the city attorney to attend meetings where we think that we would need it?
I would think it's a benefit to have him there in case something comes up. Just my opinion.
Yeah, there's, there's probably times when we don't need him, but it's hard to predict when we will, you know, issues come up or.
If I remember his contract right, he said that was included in it anyway. Am I right?
What's that?
That he, coming to the meetings was something that was just part of the, I don't, he's charging us extra for it per se. I don't know that it would drop.
He is, yep.
Oh, he is? All right. And I understand, I agree, there's times we don't need him, but we don't know what that is. That's the problem. We can probably talk ourselves into trouble quick when he's not here.
You know, so just to clarify, the reason I, for some of these, there's a few of these that I'm just, I don't know what they are, so I'm asking. But there's others, you know, I hear at our last meeting, Councilman Jacobson was like, how do we, how do we lower spending? And do we use money on allocated funds? Well, you know, part of our job is to do some hard work here too. And what, what things can we seriously consider? And what, what things can we seriously consider? What things can we cut? And, you know, what do we, what do we have to have? What can we cut? And if, I mean, if the group feels no, then that's fine. But I hear generally every year we, we want the budget lower. We wish the budget lower, but we rarely make any, take any bold steps to make any real changes. And so as I go through this and I'm looking for input, I'm just trying to understand if there's places that others on the, on the council here think that we would be worth looking to cut or, you know, or, you know, make a smaller budget. So that being said, I'll, I'll continue on. Planning and zoning, I kind of have a good feeling for that. Government buildings doesn't change much, $4,000. Is that basically maintenance stuff? Jenny, is that kind of what government buildings is? $68,000?
It is, yes.
I mean, is that utilities and those sorts of?
Yep, insurance, some things, it's.
Okay. So that, that makes sense to me. Public restroom stays, actually goes down a little or stays the same, but down from a couple of years ago. Police department? It's a mighty big number.
That is, I can explain that a little bit. Last year at this time when we were budgeting, I tried to budget really tight for wages. And we were, I wasn't sure exactly how to anticipate what to budget for a sergeant wage. And so we did, we did hold it tight, as you can see, from 19 to 20. There was really almost zero difference in their budget because I tried to keep those wages tight. And now this year, knowing our staffing situation and what we have, there was a bit of an increase now because we, you know, have a sergeant full-time and that's reflective in here. So last year for the 2020 budget, we saw a little bit of a benefit there. This year, just making the adjustment for what we know.
So. You know, with that, so, I mean, I, I would certainly be open to any discussion about eliminating an officer, cutting back an officer. I'm not, I'm not at all convinced that we need as much staff as we have. I don't know that we need to have 24/7/365 coverage, sometimes with two officers working at the same time. I would be open, if anybody else is open to have discussion about that. I don't, I personally just, I don't believe I would be in favor of that, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I don't think I'd be in favor of that either, considering the, the situation we have in this country right now and in the state with the police being battered and everything. I think we need all the police protection we, we can use to make sure we use it wisely. But I wouldn't want to cut it back at this point.
And I think this area is just going to increase in population over the next couple of years just because people are fleeing Minneapolis and other cities. My, my two cents.
Just going to be more and more remote work too. This has proved that companies don't need as big a retail rental space, office space. Employees are as efficient or more efficient working from home. And there's going to be more and more people moving up here and working from home.
Sure. Those things don't necessarily translate into a need for more police force though, because those people typically aren't going to be a problem for the police. Bob, you have a question?
Is my role here just an observer or is it like the city council meeting, I can actually make a comment?
Oh, you can make a comment. This is, this is open for, I mean, we're trying to figure out a budget, so.
Can I comment when we can hear?
No, actually, but you do, if you're going to speak, you do need to come up and you need to give your name and be on record.
Just a question. Long, long time ago, early 90s, I was a part of.
Can I give your name?
Oh, Robert Fear, resident of Nisswa.
Thank you.
A long, long time ago, I went through a stare budget cut in the early 90s when I worked for the Defense Department. And although the city council has a lot of knowledge and expertise, what my experience was, management came to each supervisory level of departments that, hey, if you had to cut $100,000, where would you make the cuts in rank order of one through 10? And I'm just wondering if there's any value or you can do it. I know all these individuals are in the union, but could you go through that exercise and get their input? Saying if you had to make a, make a cut, what would you cut and what would be the consequences? Because, you know, I went through that for real once. And, you know, they may have opened some insights that, you know, maybe the, you guys, since you're not shoveling and mowing grass, other things don't have. So that's just my one comment.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There probably is actually some value in that to help it, to help help the council look to control costs and, and maintain up minor increases in budget.
Mr. Mayor, question for Jenny. I'm looking at the $13,000 increase in the unallocated expenses. Could you explain why we keep increasing the unallocated section every year?
I sure can. That is a combination of a couple of different things, but the increase is due to the transfer to the parks and community funds. So they needed more money based on their budgets, draft budgets to make their funds work. And we transfer money to help subsidize that. And so that is what that increase is attributing to. And there's really no significant, I think some increase in insurance costs. We've actually not had a few things in our parks actually covered on our insurance. Over the last couple of years, we've realized we've been missing some things. The consequence of that is that now we have to pay for insurance to cover that. But that's proper to do that. So there's been some, an ill insurance cost increase and then just general wages and things like that. But that is what the, part of the unallocated and the increase is, is due to the parks and community center transfers.
So overall, the budget increase is $70,735 from last year, right?
Correct, yes.
And the $70,000 in sanitation, that is strictly for the recycling?
Yes.
So if, and I walked in as you guys were talking about this, so did John suggest if we paid the $70,000 from reserve funds, basically our budget would be flat?
Yes.
Okay. And is that what you suggested as I was walking in, John?
Yeah, yeah, I would take the, this year, take the money for the recycling. If, you know, assuming the county isn't going to help us out and let us do it the way we would like to do it. Take it from the reserve fund this year and then petition people, get out there with the public and really find out what do they want? Because I think they're going to want it, but then they're going to have to pay for that. And then we're going to have to figure out a final solution, but.
So if that 70 was taken out, do you know what the effect on the levy would be then?
Oh, well, the, it would be, I mean, we'd still be down to what, 2.5, 3%? Something like that? Because that was about half of that 5%. And to, to be clear, we would increase what our revenues are. We're not going to take that out of the expenditure side. We would just increase our revenues. So to show that we're going to transfer from our reserves. We're not just going to wipe out the line item. We'd still show the in, we'd still the in and out, so.
Understood, yep.
And you're talking about maintaining the existing facility, not a new one?
Right. 2021 would be the existing facility. And then if everyone, if we, and I think it's going to be that way. I think people are going to say, we want this. But then 2022, we're looking at having, by that budget time, we're, we're going to have to decide that. You know, where, where is it going to be? What is it going to be, et cetera? So.
The $70,000, is that us doing it on our own? Not with the county? Why would we not want to partner with the county and do it for 35 or so?
Really, in the instance that if they pick.
Waste partners?
Vendor X and it's not waste partners, that's where we're going to have to decide. If, if they're really going to stick to, you have to use our vendor to get that 50%, that would be the big question for us.
And when are they going to have that answer? Have they defined that?
Probably November. They're going to go out for bid sometime into September and give time to get those back, review them, award the bid. So they said their window was from start to finish, September through November.
So under public safety line item, with over the last three years, we've gone from 1,060 to 500 to 250. What are we, what are we changing? What are we, what is involved with public safety? And why are we, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it, I'm just asking, why is it getting smaller?
Yeah, I believe that is our sirens, the cost to run our sirens, our tornado sirens. So if the utility costs for running those things just gets lower, I mean, I just, there's nothing else that really happens with that. So we just keep bringing that down if there's not any other reason to have a bigger line item, so.
Is there, under public safety, does anything with any education with the school kids at, over at elementary schools? That, nothing like that is in that?
No, no, nothing like that.
Animal control, we, it's lower by 1,000? Nice thing. What's hap, what happened, what's happened there?
I think we're seeing less calls with needing to call animal control to come take a dog or, or, you know, an animal of that nature. I think there's, we're seeing less of that. So we're using them and we pay as they're called out to take an animal. So that's a good thing. I don't think they've had to deal with that as much.
Sure. Highways and streets, there's about a $22,000 difference. Is that, what's, you have a, can you tell us what that increase is about?
Yep, mostly, it's, mostly it's wages. But they have, public works has a handful of different supply accounts, repairs and maintenance and things, you know, maintaining throughout the city. So they maintain all of those costs. And so there was a little bit of, you know, if we tried to, if we had to increase one, we tried to decrease on another just to keep things balanced. So for the most part, there weren't any significant changes. I think it was, I don't know if it was our first or second budget meeting, I had mentioned that there was an odd discrepancy with our supply number. We weren't quite sure where we were going to land. And we worked that out so that there's not a significant increase there. But it's, I mean, road repairs are held flat, like patching and crack filling and things like that. Those budgets remain flat. We still have a budget for county and state road projects. So we were trying to build that fund so that if, like a county road, 1377 intersection comes along again, we had the money set aside to help pay for some of that. And we still put away money for future road projects as well. So I maintained all of our reserves in that department as well.
Okay. Streetlights, it's $1,500 more.
Yep.
Is that, is that due to changing LEDs out or is that just electrical costs?
That is just electrical for Minnesota Power or Crowing Power to run the streetlights that we have in the city.
Okay. And we were, were we a little over budget this year or do we, do they notify us of an increase or?
I don't know if we got a notice from, did we get one yet?
Yeah, it's like 11%, I think last year was like 11% and this year was 12%. They're vice versa, looking at like a 10% increase every year.
So they give us a notice to say our rates are going to go up X percent. So we try to match that.
Minnesota Power or Crowing?
I think they're both pretty similar.
Minnesota Power, Crowing Power, we just have a couple of these stations that are on, probably.
Minnesota Power, okay.
It'd be nice to know why they are increasing that by 10% a year, unless we're increasing our lighting by 10% a year. I don't think electrical costs are going up that much.
Rate differential.
Yeah, they're governed by the Public Utilities Commission who approves their, their rates, tells them what they can charge.
Right. But they don't raise, they don't raise everybody else 10% a year.
They, they can, they can raise different sections within the rate schedule.
Sometimes the light bulbs need to be replaced and it's depending on how often that happens. I think they're like 50 bucks or 100 bucks. But when I get a bill, it's either 50 or 100, so it's like, I mean, like, you know. So that can actually come here as well.
Sure. And that, and those, those costs are included in this number? So, okay. Sanitation, we talked about. And yeah, that pretty well covers it. For my, just looking to clarify.
Do we want to give her some direction on the commission committee pay that you raised the question on? Go ahead and do that or not? $7,000?
I, I know it's not a lot of money. It's still money, but I do know that the public works commission, the, the folks that are on there would like to see it happen. And I, you know, they, I would, I would say leave it in there. I think if we're going to ask people to come in and help us out and give their time and stuff, it's not a lot of money. It's just, but it's something that, you know, we value their opinion. And hopefully moving forward, that committee will become more community people than council members and stuff. I mean, as, as we're trying to change up the liaison stuff, which we are all talking about for, you know, on and off. So I think it would be important, you might, it's not a lot of money, but it might help get you a better person on that commission, committee.
No, I totally agree with that. I, you know, people who commit to monthly meetings should get a stipend of enough to cover their time. Cover some gasoline and things like that. So unless anybody has suggestions as to how to make a difference in cutting the budget, probably about perhaps a meeting.
Just, just one question. If, if we at the next meeting put out there what the 5% that you're suggesting, we can still change that up until the November or December meeting?
December.
December, okay. So we'll know from the county by then and everything?
Yes, yep.
I wouldn't be opposed to doing what we talked about is paying for the recycling center out of reserves for this year till, till we figure out a long-term solution.
If the county did capitulate, say we could keep our own hauler, but they would share, then that would bring it down 35, but I would still take it out of the reserve just for this year. And then we'd really have to push the, push it and say, what do you want? Because like Jenny said, she has to put together an enterprise fund and stuff. I think if it's run right, I think the potential is it could cover itself eventually. But that would be the goal. I mean, if it made money, great, but there's just too much fluctuation in recycling, so. Give in, give in to our side.
I have one other quick thing, just something to think about, maybe share with me some feedback another time. But as we're talking about the challenges to generate revenues and how we deal with that and, and rising costs that everybody's experiencing, there, there is an option for looking at implementing a local sales tax. So that would be a, you know, two, three, four-year-out conversation as far as planning for it. It wouldn't help 2021. But I did ask the Department of Revenue, this was probably a year and a half ago, what the revenue would, would bring into the city and it was about $300,000, 315, I think, so.
What percent?
Half a percent.
Is that the max we could do?
I think the max you can use is one. So.
Yeah, we had, we had investigated that back with the streets, roads and assessments. And so that could, that could be, can that be used? Or I know it's kind of limited to what you can use those sales tax monies for. Would that, would recycling fall in that category or?
Um, I, I'm not sure about recycling. I do know that roads are a great example of the use. So if we're, if we're, you know, budgeting money to repair roads or pay for roads, we can offset those expenditures and use, you know, the revenue from the sales tax to pay for that. And then you freed up, you've either low. And then you freed up, you've either lowered your budget or you freed it up. If you had another need or something, you were trying to figure out how to pay for all of that. But you do have to assign whatever specific use, because the legislature will sign off on that use for the money.
You know, maybe worth revisiting that with the powers that be to see if it's become any easier for cities to get that sales tax option. You know, it's, it's been getting easier. There was a time when only counties could, could get it.
Yep.
Then it was a real arm wrestle with what counties, what were your, you know, and why? Why are you special enough, you know, to need that?
Right.
And, you know, it might be worth just revisiting it, just to get a feel for what would it, what would they be looking at in order to approve that sort of thing.
That's fair, and there's more cities that have done it over the past handful of years to be able to look at kind of the reasons why they've done that. So I can definitely do that. I know they've flipped, the legislature's flipped to the process. So we actually have to get local approval, voter approval before then we would send it to the legislature for their approval. So they want to know that the community supports it first before they would look at that. But, but I can do that and just follow up with some information.
Yeah, just to, and, and if there's any cities, you know, that have recently been granted that authority to, to implement a sales tax, local sales tax, just to see what they, especially smaller communities, to see what, what hoops they've, they had to go through, what we could learn from it.
Yeah, certainly.
Practical it may be, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, there was, we did have a bit of discussion about that at one time. And, you know, it's, it's maybe still worth looking at. I think last time we looked at it, it still seemed, I know I was kind of in favor of it at the time, but it seemed like there were still some hurdles that maybe were a little bit tall, you know, so.
Right.
But I suspect it is evolving. So if we could find out more about that, what it would take would be nice to know.
And if you were able to use it as, or for recycling, specifically it gives some of the owners back to the transient population that comes into town and pays. And then after their weekend is done, they come to the recycling center and throw all their stuff in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Nobody would even know it was there.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, people don't ask about it, that's for sure. You know, one thing that with Crowing County, they got themselves, I don't know that they're, in many people's minds are completely out of that fix. But, you know, they implemented a sale, a county sales tax. And then they cut their road budget a lot. And, and that was not the intent of that money was to do that. That's a... Some people view that as misusing that sales tax. So I think, you know, if we were to ever look at that again, we would want to have some, make clear how we are looking to use that so we don't fall in that same category where it's, oh, let's cut our road budget by 300,000 a year and do something else with it. It doesn't have a good appearance.
Yep.
That's all I have.
So is the council okay with my recommendation for the preliminary levy, 5%?
I am.
We said it in September?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Okay for now?
I mean, I'm serious, I don't think, I wanted to see it around too.
Yes, absolutely, I understand that.
I would rather, I would be, feel much better about 4 right now. But I realize that it's just a number. So...
Well, could we just manipulate the 70,000 right now and just have it be 2.5?
You might not have to spend 70, it might be a half of 70.
Yeah.
Is there any updates on the full wedge money? That's supposed to be coming through to towns or small cities, small town?
It's in your packet for tomorrow night.
Oh, gotcha.
Did you see all the equipment she wants to buy in there?
We'll talk about spending some of that money tomorrow night, so. But yes, we do have it and we need to plan for it. And unfortunately, it's another one of those very quick turnarounds where we need to have our spending determined to get that done and checks cut so we can hopefully send the rest of it down to the county so they can use that in our business grant fund program that we're trying to do. So we don't have to send it back to the federal government. We can keep it here and help support our local businesses and use it wisely, so.
Well, maybe, you know, I guess, maybe we should, it seems like there's pretty favorable response towards using unallocated funds for that recycling this year. Whether it's 70,000 or 35,000. Maybe, it sounds like that's probably something, just based on what I'm hearing, we could, or you could bake into the budget.
Yes, yes, like, I think there's a consensus there as far as using whatever we need to, 35 or 70 from our reserves. So I will work that into the budget, yes.
5% could be 2.5, 3, 3?
Could be, could be 2, could be 1, could be 0 in December.
Yeah. I'm just...
Let her get her hopes up and then we can jerk it all from under.
I would, you know, I'm just questioning if, if we're in a, pretty much in a, I would say unanimous agreement with that, would we, why would we want to stay at 5%?
How about I do this? How about I bring you two options? This one at 5, and I will back out to the recycling for you. And that'll be at a 3 or something like that, and I'll bring that to you in September.
Just want to have a win.
I'm just a conservative accountant and I don't want to just take off too much before, you know, in case anything else happens. That's, but that's, that is just how I see it, so.
That's fine.
Trouble is, whatever number you pick, it never seems to go down when you come to the final.
We did a good job last year of bringing it down. We did.
Not much.
Well, be tough, be tough. You have a voice. Okay.
Well, thank you. That was all I have.
Move it to the end, sir.
Wanted to check it out. I did, I did, I put something in your, in front of you for tomorrow night. It's a parks recommendation to purchase a piece of equipment, so that's for tomorrow night, but I wanted you to have the information tonight.
Okay.
So, that is there for you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Means current.